Hello, everyone. I'm welcome. Sorry for the short delay. We are just going to start off in a few minutes. But again, I'd like to welcome you guys to the second day of our Healthcare for All Week of Action. Today is just the webinar, the Medicare for All Resolutions webinar, and we have a special guest with us today, and we'll just get started in a few minutes. We will just be starting at 6:05, so in a couple more minutes. Okay, so we're just going to go ahead and get started. Again, I'd like to welcome you guys to our Week of Action. Today's the second day. And today, again, as I mentioned earlier, where it's going to be the Medicare for All Resolutions webinar, I just wanted to guide you guys to the AMSA page, just where all of our Healthcare for All Week of Action materials will be posted. So as you can see how I got to this page when I selected Get Involved: Campaigns and Initiatives. From there, we're going to select Healthcare for All, Learn More. And then there's this little blurb that says Healthcare for All Week of Action. We have this for tomorrow's Medicaid Expansion. So for Medicaid Expansion, we pre-recorded a short little video with Jesse from he's a senior policy analyst at the Center on Budget and Policy Priorities. That'll be premiered tomorrow at 6:00 PM Eastern on YouTube. So if you select it, it'll have the little premiere date over there. And we also have a toolkit as well. There's a 2020 Medicaid Expansion Toolkit, and that's all ready to go. If you guys want to look through it a little bit earlier, we just have a few resources. The main function of tomorrow with Medicaid Expansion is just to provide you guys with a bunch of tools that you can use to eventually, or hopefully, create an op-ed or letter to the editor to either have your state continue supporting Medicaid Expansion or to join Medicaid Expansion in general. So I'm just going to introduce our panelists for today, which is Melinda. Well, she is the Director at Public Citizen for the Medicare for All campaign. For the past 20 years, Melinda has led multiple campaigns that challenge corporate power and promote economic justice and human rights, including fighting Big Pharma greed and global trade agreements. And she is now thrilled to focus her energy on building a movement to finally deliver guaranteed healthcare for everyone in the United States. So I'm going to go ahead and pass it over to you. We're going to have some, hopefully, attendees will be joining throughout the webinar, but this will be recorded and also posted on our website if you guys have, if you guys have like a few friends or medical students who weren't able to join. So Melinda, I'm going to go ahead and pass it over to you.
Great. So, well, welcome, everyone. I think you need to stop sharing your screen, Hanan.
Okay, let me.
Great. Let me just give me one second. Get started here. Does that look okay? I'm going to assume yes.
Yes, it does.
Okay, great. So hello, everyone. I'm really excited to be here with American Medical Student Association Week of Action. AMSA has been a great partner of Public Citizen, which is an organization that since the, for more than 45 years, has been the people's lobby in Washington and has been fighting corporate power in our democracy. And we have been supporters of single payer healthcare since our founding, but really recognize that now is a really incredible political moment for Medicare for All and for single payer healthcare. For, it really, five years ago, was unthinkable that Medicare for All would be a prominent mainstream debate. Just tonight, there will be a democratic debate happening. And in all of the presidential debates, we have Medicare for All has been one of the key issues that's been discussed, which is really an amazing moment that we're in politically. So we're here to build alongside our sisters and brothers at AMSA a movement that will be able to deliver guaranteed healthcare for all through Medicare for All. So I'm really excited to be here with you. I've been asked tonight to talk about a specific campaign that we have been partnering with many organizations on to win city and county council resolutions in support of Medicare for All. It's a really key tactic that we can use to build the ground game we need to win. So I'll just begin by locating this within the broader strategy. And that Medicare for All, obviously, we have our work cut out for ourselves. We believe very strongly, and we can obviously talk in other webinars, and we have before, about why Medicare for All is the right policy to be able to deliver quality healthcare to everyone in the United States and actually making the most economic sense, that we actually can cut costs of what we're currently spending on healthcare and actually provide healthcare for everyone through Medicare for All. So we won't be getting into why we need it. We're assuming that we're all on the same page, but happy to answer those questions down the road. But for this, I wanted to talk about strategy of how we're going to win. And I want to begin by saying first, we want to set the terms of the debate. And that's a challenge right now, because as Medicare for All becomes more and more of a mainstream issue, the corporations and the CEOs that are profiting off of the status quo are getting more and more entrenched, and they're spending more and more millions and millions of dollars in attacking Medicare for All, both from the Republican side, but also we're seeing from policymakers, Democrats as well. And so it's really important for us to be out there, making the arguments and setting the terms of the debate. And it's critical that we educate and mobilize the base. We do not have the millions that the insurance industry and that Big Pharma and that the large hospital associations have, but what we can have is the people power. And we know that when the American people know the arguments and are actually educated about that, they are with us, because people are experiencing the pain of our current system right now and know that massive change needs to happen. And so we need to educate and mobilize our base, and we need to inoculate against this strategy of dividing and conquering, particularly the left on this issue. And obviously, this isn't going to pass unless Congress passes this legislation. And so we need to hold our politicians accountable from the local level up to Congress and obviously, the White House as well. And so that's kind of the overall strategy. And then the organizers toolkit, which I know that many AMSA folks have participated in in the past, are holding town halls in our community, having field hearings, bird dogging, which means going out where candidates or elected officials are having town halls themselves, or going to events where they're speaking and asking them questions, asking them about Medicare for All, forcing them to take a stand, canvassing, which means going door to door within your medical schools, within your communities, using the media and the op-eds and social media trainings. And then what we're going to talk about here, which is another tactic for this organizers toolkit, which is local city and county council resolutions. And so why local resolutions? Well, local resolutions are a really great way to actually be able to shape the national narrative from the ground up, and that's what we're going to need to be able to win. And I have on this slide talking about a previous effort that Public Citizen and many other organizations were involved in a few years ago to pass local resolutions calling for a constitutional amendment to overturn Citizens United, the Supreme Court decision, which is incredibly important in terms of challenging money and politics in the United States. And that was really a fringe issue. Nobody really even understood what that was. But it was through the work of over and over in communities across the country passing these resolutions that they were able to shift the conversation. And this year, the first bill in the House that was passed in the House of Representatives, H.R. 1, addressed these issues. So it came from the ground up. And it's really an opportunity for local education and getting earned media at the local level around Medicare for All. And it's a way to bring local government officials into the advocacy that you're already doing with members of Congress. And obviously, having local officials on board has a different level of gravitas with members of Congress and with congressional delegations than others. And this tactic is relevant everywhere. It's relevant in blue states, obviously, but also in red states and in purple districts around the country. Because even if you have a member of Congress who's hostile to Medicare for All and has said they'll never support it, this is something you can do in the meantime to build up the base. If you have a member of Congress who's already signed on and who's a champion, this can help them feel like even more of a champion. And if you have representatives undecided, this is a really important way to increase the pressure. And Medicare for All really does have benefits at the local level, and particularly for local governments. And that's why we're seeing local governments getting on board to pass these resolutions. And just a few reasons why it would benefit local governments is that, obviously, by increasing the well-being of residents in a community, keeping people healthier, ending the risk of them going into debt or facing bankruptcy, this is going to improve the lives of the community at large. And importantly, it will also lessen the fiscal burden that local governments are facing. Local governments and municipal budgets are being completely strapped by rising healthcare costs for municipal employees, for school boards, for example. The healthcare line item is number two after salaries, and it's going up. And it means that there's less resources for other important municipal priorities, like roads, like books, like, and other really important municipal priorities are being undercut because of the increased costs in healthcare. And then importantly, at the local level, as we know, local business entrepreneurs, that's a critical part of a thriving local community. And people have a really hard time starting businesses. And if they, because of the burden of providing health insurance for their employees, we just recently spoke with small businesses, small business owners, who are saying this is the most onerous thing they have to deal with when they're trying to figure out how to start a business. And obviously, people are staying in jobs they don't like because they're afraid to lose their health insurance. So those are just some reasons why local governments are coming on board. So this effort is a broad effort. I'm with Public Citizen, and we're helping to coordinate this, but we're working with a broad range of organizations. These are some of, obviously, you see AMSA right there, but National Nurses United, Physicians for a National Health Program, several labor unions, the Machinist Union, United Electrical Workers, Indivisible, some of the large online groups like Daily Coast, Our Revolution, Democracy for America, Credo. So this is a growing number of organizational partners that have come on board to help promote and to urge members and all around the country to pass these local resolutions. And I'm excited. We started this effort in April of last year, and already, there are more than 270 efforts underway in communities across the country. This is a map that you can find on our website, which I will also share, so you can see how to navigate it. And it's growing, and it's changing every week with more resolutions, efforts underway. The green ones here, ones that have already passed, just in this year. Some of them include Los Angeles, California recently. So the second largest city in the country is now officially on board, voted 10 to 1 in favor of Medicare for All. But we also have cities like Tampa, Florida, Tucson, Arizona, and Bethlehem, Pennsylvania, which is a Trump country, and steel towns of Pennsylvania. And so what we're seeing is that this is something that is resonating across parties and geographically across the country. So it's something that can work everywhere. I also want to note Cook County, which is the second largest county in the United States, including Chicago, Illinois, has passed a resolution. So we have a lot of momentum, but there's a lot more to do. So these are the ones that have passed, and then all these other ones are in progress with activists contacting their members or their local officials, getting these efforts underway. But I think it's really exciting, because it's something that's very doable for communities and for student groups as well to get on board. So we have on our website, which is Medicare for, number for, AllResolutions.org, there are the steps. We have a very comprehensive toolkit. And I'm going to just stop for one moment and show you the website. Can you see the, I just, let me know if you can't see this website, folks who are watching. But this is the Medicare for All Resolutions website. And we have, you can, this is taking action in your town. This is how you can navigate to the map. So there is the map, and it has the list of all of the resolutions that have passed, and tools for activists. So this is a comprehensive toolkit that we have put together to make it fun and easy for anyone who has, whether you're seasoned activist or whether you're just getting started for the first time, we have ways that you can get involved. So first is checking to see if there's already an effort in your town. And if there is, we can connect you with that effort that's already underway. But you can also sign, what we want is to populate that map. We want to get hundreds of these passed. That's what's going to take to really change the conversation. So you can sign up there. And then we have, you can have an organizing meeting or organizing party to get started. And if you go there, we have all of the types of resources that you might need, just from outreach tips, how to get people to come to an event, a social media guide to build support for it, and a sample flyer if you need it. And then we have, and we have a sample agenda that's very clear of what are the kinds of tasks and how you can go about that. So just you can click on that and see the, there's a whole agenda, has ideas for you. Obviously, you can do whatever you want, but these are just tools that are available. We have sign-in sheets, et cetera. So one is just to get yourself organized and to plan how you're going to move forward with your resolution. And then we have approaching your councilperson or county commissioner, how you would go about doing that if you haven't done it before. We have model meeting request letters. So if you want help in thinking about how you want to address them, to have a meeting, preparations that you can make before your meeting, and what you can do with some resources. Two important things, I think, that, resources that we have here is we have, you know, sample resolution language. So you don't have to start from scratch. You know, here is sample resolution. Sometimes, local communities want to make them customize it and personalize it for their communities. And so in addition to the samples that we have there, you can also look at the resolutions that have been passed. So if you go back to where the resolutions that have been passed, you can actually click on, and it pulls up, you know, the City of Los Angeles Resolution. So this is also something that's very helpful for local, for city councils to see that this is happening in other countries, or other cities and counties around the country. And it has some additional ideas of resolutions. And then, you know, and then finally, I'm going back to the toolkit here. We have steps for, you know, planning to pass your resolution, how to get media outreach and media to your event. What are some, do you want to prep people to give testimony at the vote? And that's a really great opportunity, an organizing opportunity, as well as an opportunity to get the word out and to educate people. We have documents for press packets, et cetera. So we have a really comprehensive toolkit, but that's not, but we also, you know, have, are willing to help you one-on-one. So I'm going to go back to the, sorry, let me just skip through here. So those are some of the steps and the tools that we have available. And then importantly, after a resolution is passed, this can again be used as part of your advocacy with a member of Congress. So you can share the resolution with a federal representative, invite key city council members who championed it to write op-eds, to advocate as well. So those are some of the steps. And here's the sample resolution language that I had mentioned, so you can put in whatever whereas clauses make sense for the community. Oftentimes, it's good to just keep it short. But then importantly, what we suggest is that the city and county council, you know, say that they resolved to support the Medicare for All Act of 2019, which is 1384 in the House and 1129 in the Senate, calling on the federal legislators to work towards enactment. And then in other, in some states, there's important state-level legislation that can also be pointed to. And some states have actually also included Medicaid Expansion. I know that that's something you're also talking about. You can include also, in the meantime, we encourage Medicaid Expansion. So there's lots of opportunities to talk broadly about healthcare. But we think it's really important to lay a marker and to set the debate, saying, actually, yes, we can do Medicare for All. Yes, we can afford Medicare for All. And in fact, that's the solution that we need. So I've explained to you how you can use this toolkit and the MedicareForAllResolutions.org website. And so what I really want to do is encourage all of you to consider joining or beginning a local resolution effort in your community, because I think this is eminently doable for a local group and for us. And I think having AMSA and medical students engaged in this is extraordinarily powerful and will be, will have extra credibility to your local community and local officials if this is something that you bring forward. So the first thing, as I mentioned, is that you can sign up on the map that's at MedicareForAllResolutions.org, and you can access the toolkit there, and there's a step-by-step guide. And we have a number of resources available. In addition to the toolkit, we have monthly webinars, and I will say a little bit more about those. We also, for, we have local leaders calls, so that's more of an interactive monthly call for activists who are very involved in their communities and want to learn from what's working in other communities around the country. And we also have an organizer, Brittany Shanahan, who works with me as well as myself, are available for one-on-one support. If you hit a snag or want to talk through some ideas, you know, we have that available as well. And what's really exciting is that because this is a coalition effort, we have large national organizations that have members in congressional districts all over the country, and in cities and counties and small towns all over the country, that we can try to connect in as well. So Indivisible chapters, because Indivisible is involved, as I mentioned, Credo, which has a huge list, Daily Coast, some of the labor unions. So we can get support in communities, and it's a way to build bridges across constituencies and build up your base, which we will need in addition after we pass these resolutions to continue our advocacy efforts. Here's a little bit more about the webinars, and you can see those. We have all of them listed on the toolkit as well. But just as an example, just this past week, Representative Joe Kennedy from Massachusetts spoke on the webinar, which is quite exciting, because he was a late arrival to supporting Medicare for All. He actually hadn't signed on to the bill, and because of a lot of pressure in his district, he did eventually do that, and is now speaking out and was a champion for Medicare for All at a recent hearing. He's on the subcommittee of, the health subcommittee of an important committee in Congress. So that was exciting to hear from him. We've heard from local officials. Philadelphia Councilmember Helen Jim gave a really inspiring talk at our December webinar. And in addition to, in each one, we also highlight national experts. We've had economists. We've had to talk through different issue areas. We've had physicians. We've had medical students and nurses and labor leaders to speak about bringing in different constituencies, business leaders. And then importantly, we've had exciting updates from activist leaders around the country. So we would love to invite you to talk about what's happening in your community as well. And we had a very exciting virtual town hall in October with Representative Ilhan Omar and Representative Ayanna Pressley. That was very exciting. We had 36,000 people tuning in over time for that webinar, that virtual town hall. So this is a resource that you can watch the town halls or the webinars from before as part of an organizing meeting, if that would be helpful. And then also, you can RSVP, and please consider RSVPing for our upcoming webinar that will be on February 5th in a few weeks at 8:00 PM Eastern, 5:00 PM Pacific. And there's a link there that you can use to RSVP. You can also find that on our website. So I will leave it there, and I welcome any questions that you all have.
Thank you so much, Melinda. That was a really terrific presentation. We did have a couple of questions come in. One asking, you mentioned about sample agendas for local meetings. Can you share a little bit more with us about the resources you have on that level?
Sure, I can definitely do that. Oh, let me, I need to share my screen, and I will find the right tab, which is... Let me find, I need to navigate away from... Okay, here we go. So if you go to our website again, MedicareForAllResolutions.org, there's a tool for activists, and we have two guides here.
Sorry, Melinda. We are still seeing your slide.
You're seeing my slide? Okay. Let me, all right, I'm going to start over. So now you can't see my screen, right?
Correct.
Now, let me... Now can you see the webinar?
Yes.
Okay, great, or the website. So this is MedicareForAllResolutions.org, and this is in the Tools for Activists tab. We have two things here. So one is a suggested timeline and detailed step-by-step guidance. So again, these are just suggestions. You can do it any way that you want, but it actually breaks it down by weeks, if that's helpful for your group, things that you should be kind of thinking about in various weeks if you want to get through in, you know, about a three-month period. Some people have found it...
Some people have found it's a lot quicker than that. Some people have found that it can take a bit longer than that. So that is one resource. And then, as I mentioned, if you're planning an organizing party, we have sample organizing party agenda for hosts. And in this agenda, you can find how, it has some suggestions for potential videos. But we, and we also, as I mentioned, you can also show a video of a webinar, a virtual town hall, if that'd be helpful. And then has a timeline and, you know, the timeline for how you would go about it, determining whether your group wants to aim for a city council resolution or a different kind of resolution, identifying the city council members to introduce it, brainstorming, and closing. And we even have a worksheet that you can use to sign, for people to be able to sign up for various tasks. So to, you know, what you decided to do, the order preparation, who agreed to do what, by when. So these are some tools that for new activists can be helpful. And we also are happy to work with you if there's something else that you need that would help you and feeling confident and being able to do it. I mean, one of the things that you'll see if you look at the webinars or if you attend our webinars or local leaders calls is that lots of people who have been in, who haven't done this before, have jumped in and have found it to be a really enriching experience.
Wonderful, thank you so much. We're really excited to be part of this campaign. We know that you have work going on in over 270 cities around the country. And over the next few months, we hope to get deeper involved with you and have you back for an update down the road. So thank you again for joining us here tonight.
Great, well, thank you so much. And we are so grateful for the partnership with AMSA and really excited about your Week of Action. Glad to hear that there are so many medical students who are passionate about this issue, and we really need you in this fight with us. So thank you so much.
Thank you.